Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. We're fortunate to have Bill Holtz here this morning. Bill is the senior pastor at Putnam City Baptist Church. Welcome, Bill. I'll also ask Councilman Pat Ryan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance following the invocation. But everyone, please stand.
Before I lead us in a word of prayer, I just want to thank the mayor and the city council. I am a new member back to Oklahoma City. I left in 1993. I was a minister. I went to another church, came back to Oklahoma City December this last year to a very different city. A city that's alive, a city that is proud, a city that is exciting to be back at, and I thank you for what you're doing to make our city so great. So I want to continue to pray for God's blessing and honor on what you do and on our great city. Could we do that together? Let's pray. Father God, I thank you for this day that you've made, and Lord, for us in this room, there are many decisions that will be made on behalf of the citizens of this city. And Lord, I just pray that we would not lean on our own understanding, but we would acknowledge you in all of our ways, that we would give you honor and glory, that we would humble ourselves before you and your will for our lives and for this city. God, I thank you for the discernment and the wisdom that you will give these men and women today. Lord, may you guide us and direct us. May we continue to look to you and your perfect will. God, thank you for who you are in our lives and for it you allow us to experience each and every day, for we ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I lost Georgie. Georgie, come on down.
Hi.
Hi. Georgie is responsible for gathering so many of our neighborhoods and allowing them the opportunity to congregate and get organized and take charge of their neighborhoods, create safer, better places to live, and we appreciate her so much. We take this opportunity to honor Georgie on our proclamation for Neighborhood Night Out, which is coming up very, very soon. Now, Georgie has many community leaders here with her this morning. We just took a picture outside the West Steps. And Georgie thought that one day was not enough, so Georgie, this year we have two days that neighborhoods can choose from.
We do.
So I'll hand you the microphone to allow you to explain which of those days they are, and so neighborhoods that may not be as organized as some can get involved. But right now, let's hear the proclamation that the clerk's going to read.
Whereas National Night Out is held across the country on Tuesday, August 2nd, as a means for neighbors to meet each other and partner with city crime prevention services, all in an effort to reduce crime in their neighborhood. And whereas the weather in Oklahoma is typically not hospitable to outdoor events held in August, the Oklahoma City neighborhoods have chosen to celebrate Neighbor's Night Out in the cooler month of September. Whereas Neighborhood Alliance, Oklahoma City Police Department, Oklahoma City Fire Department, city officials, and Target stores are partnering with Oklahoma City's neighborhood leaders to declare today, August 2nd, as the kickoff for our very own Oklahoma City Neighbor's Night Out Against Crime, events to be held on Saturday, September 10th, or Tuesday, September 13th, 2011. Whereas it is important that all citizens in Oklahoma City be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the positive impact that organized neighborhoods can have on our entire city. We can honestly say that sometimes just sitting down and eating a hot dog with your neighbor is what it takes to make a safer, more connected neighborhood. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 2nd, as Neighbor's Night Out kickoff, and both Sunday, September 10th and Tuesday, September 13th, as Neighbor's Night Out Against Crime in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to Neighborhood Alliance and Georgie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. We're looking forward to another big year of parties all across Oklahoma City due to partners like Target, which has been wonderful, Oklahoma City Police Department, Oklahoma City Fire Department, the city council, all city departments, on either Tuesday night, September 10th, or Saturday, September 13th. Neighborhoods have their choice this year. You can throw a party in your neighborhood. It can be as small as just getting everybody on your block to come down and enjoy some watermelon in your front yard, or as big as medical communities that has 600 people and a great big tent donated by Flint Co. and DJs and all kinds of things going on over there. You can do anything at all. The point is, get to know your neighbors. Getting to know your neighbors is what makes a safer community and what continues to make us a great city to live in. So we're looking forward to having the kickoff, and thank you very much for having us here today.
How many neighborhoods do you think will participate this year?
Anywhere between 80 and 90. So we'll have a lot of parties that we'll all try to go out to. The police helicopter comes over and buzzes as many of them as they can. The police chief and fire chief go out. The city council members go out and visit. So we'll have a lot of parties going on.
And the helicopter just to provide a breeze for the...
That's right. We're hoping it's cooler in September. We're hoping.
All right. Let's show our appreciation again. Georgie, thank you very much. One other thing, if there's a neighborhood that's not organized to the level they'd like to be and would like to get involved in your organization, what do they need to do?
Every, the first Tuesday of every month, meaning tonight even, we have a meeting in our office that's free of charge on how to organize a neighborhood association. We'll even give you a free supper. So come on, just call our office, look at our website. We'll have you, once you attend that meeting, then we'll work with you one-on-one from that point, doing whatever it takes for your neighborhood to be organized and get what you need to get done.
All right. Neighborhood Alliance, Georgie Raskin. Thank you very much, Georgie. Well, it is time to go back to school for most of our schools in the metro area, and we are taking this morning's opportunity to meet our youth counselors for the very first time. Youth Council is an organization or an association that was put together just over 10 years ago, and it's our chance to provide some leadership training for some outstanding high schoolers and a chance to get to know more about their city government and a chance to meet their city council representative up close. So we are fortunate today to have a lot of young and smiling faces in our midst today. And I want to especially thank our co-chairs this year, Kathy Williams and Frank Merrick. Would you two please stand so we know whom to blame? So much organization, all time, is spent organizing these events for these young people, and I continually get feedback from them long after they're gone from our program, how much they appreciated the opportunity to learn so much about their city. So thank you too for this year and for your continued support of this organization and wonderful program. Well, Debbie, you want to get us going there? All right. So the youth counselors are going to come and stand behind their prospective council representative. And this is an opportunity for our counselors to introduce this year's youth counselors. Gary, you want to get us started down there?
Sure, Mayor. I'll do that. I appreciate that. My, the first youth council from Ward 1 is James Laporte. James is a junior at Bishop McGuinness High School. He is a member of the Key Club, the Junior Classical League, which is the Latin Club, and all the while maintaining a 4.476 weighted GPA. In his spare time, it says he follows the stock market and plays video games. I thought in today's world, that was about the same thing, but maybe combining the two talents, I don't know. James is concerned about the inconsistency in education, budget deficits, and public transportation problems as they relate to the Oklahoma City teens, which I think is a noble thing to be concerned about. His parents told me that they, he's interested in politics. I told them I hoped he could say the same thing nine months from now when he got through with the youth council. He does have his parents with him this morning, Joanna and Lester Laporte are here. Stand up, please, real quick. And his grandmother, Debbie Catper, is here also. Thank you for coming. And James? Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
The second one is Brent White. Brent is a senior at Putnam City North. He's a member of DECA and FCC LA, which is Family, Community, and Career Leaders of America. He's been named to the Superintendent of Putnam City Schools Advisory Committee. Brent lists substance abuse, school dropout rates, and unplanned pregnancy as his concerns for his youth council. Again, another list that's, hopefully, they can do something about. He has his parents with him, Cassandra and Sly. Where are they at? Stand up, please. Nobody escaped standing up here. Congratulations. Brent, congratulations to you. Ed?
All right. Ed? Hey. In Ward 2, we have two outstanding youth counselors. The first is Phoebe Mitchell, and her parents, Charlotte and Brian. I guess you have to stand up for this one. Okay. And then her brother Reeves and grandparents, Robert and Norma. She is a senior at Heritage Hall. She's a member of the National Honor Society, National Math Honor Society. She's been a featured performer at Lyric Theater for nine years. She's volunteered in multiple organizations, including the Infant Crisis Center. She has an interest in combating chemical dependency, and we look forward to working with her this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Brandon Noe and his parents, Lanay and Chris. Brandon is a senior at Bishop McGuinness High School. He's class president. He's also a member of the National Honor Society. He's a lead male singer in the Bishop McGuinness Choir. He's a three-year member of the Junior Varsity Tennis Team. He's also volunteered extensively at Feed the Children, the Regional Food Bank, and other organizations. And he also has an interest in combating chemical dependency, and we look forward to working with Brandon this year. Thank you.
It's my pleasure to introduce the two youth counselors for Ward 3. First is Angelica Brooks. Angelica is a class of 2013 at the Class and School Advanced Studies. She's very active at her school. One of her favorite organizations is Students Against Destructive Decisions. She's also a member of the Black Student Union. This spring, she will play soccer. She's not going to go out for the U.S. Soccer Team. She just plays soccer for fun. And outside of school, she's a teen board member for Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Her issues that she'd like to see addressed, drug and alcohol abuse and teen pregnancy. And I'm going to have Angelica introduce her supporters. None of these young people got here on their own. Their parents and siblings were responsible for bringing them up with character and commitment. So, Angelica, if you'd just introduce who's here.
I'd like to thank my dad, my grandmother, my mom, and my stepdad for coming out and supporting me today. Thank you.
Yeah, y'all got to stand. Our next youth counselor is Grant Guzman. Grant is also a member of the class of 2013, but he goes to Western Heights School. He, I'm just going to read what his counselor said about him, because I think this is amazing. "Resolute values, courage, trustworthiness, high intelligence, and a sense of humor combine to make Grant Guzman a teenager worth knowing." With that said, he's very active at different organizations on campus. And outside of campus, he's involved in the Royal Rangers, the Angel Food Ministry, and also his church youth group. His issues, he'd like to get parental involvement in the lives of young people, and also, he would also like to address the dropout rate. So Grant, if you'd introduce your supporters.
I'd like to thank my parents, my mom and dad, Rick and Reena Guzman, and my little brother, Garrett Guzman. If you could stand up.
My youth council member that I want to introduce today is Dimitri Wertham. Dimitri is a senior at Santa Fe South High School. And I would too like to read the comments that are made about him that I have in his bio. Quotes, "overflowing with community service ideas, adamant on helping those around him, make sure everyone is always included, encourages those around him to make good choices." All these words have been used to describe him. He is a, serves on the student council at Santa Fe South and recently was, became the president of the student council, works with the youth group in his church and as the choir director. He also mentors first graders. In that, he has something in common with my wife, who's a lobbyist at the Ledge Lecter. He, he says of his mentoring of first graders, and my wife would probably agree with this also, "reading and coloring with them and also talking to them about life." He has served as the graduation marshal for the last two years, and in his spare time, he enjoys connecting with his grandmother or his friends. He feels the most pressing issues facing central Oklahoma youth are the availability of illegal drugs, the challenges faced by single-parent families, and the threat of gangs. He's here with his mother today, Donna Wertham. Wertham, please stand. And the other member of the youth council from Ward 4 is not here this morning. I'll just give you a little bit about him. His name's Colas Sierra. He attends Dove Academy. His major concerns are poor nutrition and the rising number of high school dropouts. There's a lot of other stuff about it, but since he's not here, I'll tell him about it when I see him next time. Congratulations.
I also have one youth counselor who is not here. I'll start with an introduction of him in absentia. Jack Downs is a student at Bishop McGuinness High School. He is a two-time class president there. Also serves on the cross-country team and the swim team. He's active at his church. He has practiced and studied the piano for 11 years, so we look forward to meeting Jack down the line. But here with us today is Megan Eisenstadt. Megan, welcome to City Hall. Megan's mother, Sandy, is here. Sandy, would you please stand so we can get a look at you? Megan is a member of the Honor Orchestra. She's also in the Oklahoma Youth Philharmonic. She plays the viola. She's also in the Putnam City North Drama Team and has been her class historian for the past two years. So welcome down here. Here's your pen.
Well, we have two counselors from Ward 5, although the first one, Derek Nguyen, is not able to join us unfortunately today. He's a senior at Westmore High School. Derek has a 4.75 grade point average, actively participates in the National Honor Society, youth government, scholastic team, academic team, and basketball. He is also a finalist for the Masonic Student of Today and is currently the youth and government governor for the state of Oklahoma. Derek's concerns include the concerns for his peers as far as access to alcohol and drug, and lack of transportation resources for teens who don't drive. But joining us today is Melissa Zanabria, and Melissa's here with her father, Raoul, and her older sister, Rosemary.
Yes.
Rosemary, would you two please stand up? And Melissa has just as an impressive resume, 4.5 grade point average, serves as class officer for three years, actively involved in the National Honor Society, and three-year participant in Upward Bound. She's a regular volunteer with Christmas Connection and placed second in Spanish at a recent scholastic meet. Also received an award from Algebra I, and in her spare time enjoys reading, cooking, baking with her family, and playing with the family dog, Misty. Now, her concerns include remedies for violence, peer pressure, and lack of moral support for the, by the peers. So Melissa, thank you for working with us. We're looking forward to the next nine months, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce two counselors from Ward 6. We first have with us Ellie Johnson, and Ellie's here with her dad, Barry Johnson. Barry, could you stand, please? Thank you. Ellie is a member of the class of 2013 at Heritage Hall School. She serves on the teen boards of both Oklahoma City Beautiful and Big Brothers and Big Sisters. She's volunteered for the Oklahoma Visual Arts Coalition and the Annual Festival of the Arts, where you will see lots of familiar faces. I bet everybody in this room has done the same thing. She's a volunteer volleyball coach at Westminster School. She's, at school, she founded the recycling club, and the issues that she feels are very important to Oklahoma City include the lack of recycling capability in our schools and the large number of unwanted stray animals in our community. And that is something that this council works on an awful lot, so we'll look forward to working with you. Congratulations, and here's your pen. I also have today Pam Ortega. Pam is, hi Pam. Pam is a member also of the class of 2013. She attends Southeast High School. Some of the words that were used to describe Pam are organization, follow-through, keen intelligence, boldness, always present in the moment, and prepared. That's going to serve you very well. She's an officer in student council and a class member of that National Honor Society. She's also in the drama club. She's worked at OETA. She's volunteered at OETA and the Oklahoma City Memorial Marathon, and she's been a Salvation Army bell ringer, which is also one of my favorite things to do at Christmas time. She's number one in her class with a GPA of 4.1. In her spare time, she enjoys reading, watching the news, which has been pretty interesting lately, socializing, and researching. Pam is concerned with the issues of depression in teens and bullying of students, particularly the disabled. So I want to welcome you to Ward 6 and look forward to working with you. Thanks, Pam. And I'm sorry, you're here with your mom. Laura's here. Laura, would you stand up, please? Thank you.
Well, as you can see, I guess I've been a bad boy. I got deprived again. But unfortunately, the two city, student councils that I have could not be here. I'm really kind of jealous about one, because I understand one is in Russia while we're suffering in this here heat. She's over there enjoying the beautiful landscape of Russia. But Autumn Breckenridge is Northeast Academy, class of 2013, is a member of the National Honor Society. Works with elementary and middle school students from local schools in the area. She's a faithful member of Tabitha Baptist Church. She continues to be on the principal's honor roll and has received the Good Citizens Award and the Outstanding Student in Reading Award and the Principal's Award for reading in English. The other one that serves for Ward 7 will be Crystal Walker, and Crystal is a class, Harding Charter High School, class of 2012. She's a member of the student council, history club, and the National Honor Society. She's a three-year volunteer at Camp Rock Creek, a Christian camp for youth in grades three through eight. And so, in, oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'll tell the rest when I see them. But I don't know if any of the family of Autumn Breckenridge is here or Crystal Walker, but if not, these are the two individuals that will serve and represent Ward 7 for the coming year. Thank you.
You know, I have the pleasure to introduce two outstanding young men this morning who are going to represent Ward 8. First is Brett Holloman. Your parents are in the audience, I believe? Will they stand up, please, and be recognized? Because they have a very accomplished young man. They brought along a lot of support, it looks like, Brett, out of the siblings. Very good. Brett's had an outstanding background in high school. He is, attends Edmund North High School, will graduate in 2012. He's a member of a number of societies, but I think most recently, he's been recognized as an Eagle Scout. He's a member of the National Honor Society. But I'd like to read one quote from his short biography that I have here, and it's attributed to Brett, so I hope it's accurate. "I understand that activities involving acting, singing, and dancing aren't exactly what you would usually associate with a teenage boy. But in my many years of trying everything from fencing to football, I believe I found my place on this stage." But that's a really courageous thing to say, and I appreciate your efforts there, because I'm a strong supporter of the arts. He feels that Oklahoma City has concerns for teens in the areas of a lack of an effective student support system, the lack of awareness of post-high school opportunities, and a lack of understanding of current events. Brett, welcome aboard. It's a pleasure to have you here. The second young man who's going to represent Ward 8 is Wade Newville, and I know your parents are in the audience. I met him earlier. Would they please stand? Be recognized. Thank you very much for loaning us your son for this program. We appreciate that. Wade attends Heritage Hall School. He will graduate in 2013. He is also an outstanding student and has a number of activities on his biography here. But again, I want to read one particular sentence that I think is interesting. "Wade enjoys performing as well as reading and writing and spending time with family and friends. He's active in lyric theater, student theater, and other activities in the city. Another unique achievement." Pen for youth. Thank you very much. And Wade also feels that a lack of employment opportunities for recent graduates is a concern for the students' growing standards of education and life matters. And welcome aboard, both of you. I really appreciate your being, volunteering to do this. Thank you, hon.
It's nice to have all of you as part of our process. Why don't we have the first vote of the morning to be the appointment of our youth counselors to the youth council of Oklahoma City? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and that's the way it's supposed to be, unanimous. Thank you all very much. Let's show our appreciation. Look forward to working with you. Me too. It's another appointment. These are appointments to the Library Commission. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 3C, travel expenses for the mayor. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item 4, it's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for July 19th. Item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for both July 5th and July 12th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. See, request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have a couple this morning on the lap dated unsecured, starting on page 16. On page 16, under item 8G1I, 800 Northwest, 114th Street, we ask that be stricken to re-notify. On page 17, under item 8H1A, 2111 North Everest, we ask that be stricken. It's now occupied. Item B, 1905 South Grand, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item D, 1512 Rockwell, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item E, 9017 North University, we ask that be stricken to notify for additional violations. Item F, 5115 South Young's Boulevard, we ask that be stricken to re-notify. Item I, 2138 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 209 Southeast 22nd Street, we ask that be stricken. There's a new owner. There's a new owner. Item T, 620 Southwest 46th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And Item V, 4435 Northwest 63rd Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right. We'll reassess the council meeting. Communities Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority think it might be best if we look at A through E separately and then discuss Item F, which I assume there may be some council discussion about. So, how about a motion on Item A through E of the MFA? Right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Then on Item F, this is an idea which has been proposed by Councilman Shaddid and Councilman White. Councilman Shadid, sorry.
Your Honor?
Councilman White.
Your Honor?
Yes, Pat?
I'd like to make a comment on this. I don't feel overly strong about this, but I think this resolution may be unnecessary. And I've been on the council for six years now, and I've never heard a councilman ask for a deferral that had a good reason attached to it that was ever disapproved. So, I think this goes a step beyond what we really need to do. The second aspect that concerns me a little bit is the automatic aspect of the request for a deferral. I think anything that's automatic raises a potential for abuse if we go forward. And for those reasons, I would be opposed to adopting this order.
All right. Comments or questions?
Well, in response to that, I think Councilman Shadid had a good reason to ask for a continuance two weeks ago. What we're trying to do, what the effort is, is to try to make this a little bit less personal, a little bit formalized, so that other people don't get to decide whether I have a good reason or not. Historically, this council has let me decide whether I had a good reason or not for a continuance. That's been the way it's been done for 25 years here. If I said I needed a continuance, or if Larry said he needed a continuance, or if Pat said he needed a continuance, there wasn't a challenge to whether or not what my motives were, or whether I had a, quote, "good reason" or not. It was just automatically done as a matter of courtesy. We're now meeting every other week. So, the idea that delaying something a week, we're delaying everything a week, or every other docket is delayed a week by the fact that we go on a summer schedule. So, a one-week delay, based on courtesy, to me, it's -- I'm just hard-pressed to find a good reason that anyone would vote against it. I -- I'm disturbed because people would find -- it reminds me of another matter that's been before the council for a long time. And that is, people, on this matter, people just want to vote no, and we're going to look for a reason to vote no. It's been watered down to the point, it's very simple, and it seems to me it's just a matter of courtesy to do it.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilman Shadid?
Well, I'm not sure that there's ever going to be a good time for this, but I just want to relay that the purpose of it is to delay conflict. I mean, I may be pouring gas on the fire right now, but the, you know, one of the cardinal rules in conflict resolution is if there's a matter of contention which is subjective in nature and which there's repeated conflict, then the parties should agree to a policy in writing and refer to that document rather than repeatedly engaging each other. And we've had multiple. We've had four council meetings, and we're talking about whether to have a continuance or not. We've had people voting against continuances with as many as three councilors asking for a continuance. We've had reports in the media. And so, about, you know, the denial of a deferral, I just -- it doesn't really matter whether this passes or fails. Either way, it helps me. It helps decrease conflict, I think. Because then, I understand where we stand. I think the vitograph property was a good example of the absolute need for the ability to catch something and ask for a continuance. We did that in May. It's now August, and there's still are negotiating with the city over a financial matter that, frankly, I think should have been resolved before it came to the council. That was supposed to all be wrapped up long ago. We came up with a three-hearing resolution to try and address that. It was clear that that didn't have support, so we have whittled it down to its most anemic, least common denominator state, based primarily on the comments that were made at council on May 31st. Pat said there's a clear avenue to do exactly what Councilor Shadid wants to do without adopting a resolution, and that's to ask for a deferral. Meg said we have a process in place. We have the ability to defer any document we want, and I don't see the system is broken. I don't see the need to fix it. With something that's place-specific, all you need to do is continue it. You don't need to have three hearings. You can just defer it for as long as you need. Gary, the system we've been using has worked very well for years and years. Now, if you have questions, or you want to change something, or you don't like what's in that document once you see it, I've never known that we haven't deferred it when it has been requested, and deferred it multiple weeks if we need to hash it out, which we've done, and there's nothing wrong with that. I don't have a problem with deferring anything that a council member doesn't feel comfortable voting on if they have a reason that they saw something. Again, I can live with however this vote goes. If it passes, then I know I can get a continuance. If it fails, I'm not, and I can't give back. I'm in Boston. I'm not going to call Jim Calhoun, Pete White. I know that if I spend a good amount of my vacation getting ready for a council meeting, and I want to be here, I just need to get here. I don't need to do -- it helps me understand the ground rules, and because of the differing -- I just need to know the ground rules. My goal is to maximize transparency, to give maximum critical evaluation of the contracts and methodology of the studies that we're using, and to maximize public awareness and deliberation. Being able to get a continuance like this would be a tremendous help. It would be an inconvenience if I can't, but it's not the only way to get that information out, and I can live with however the council votes. Thanks.
It just seems to me, and Ed and Pete either want to be a connection, it just seems to me to limit council discretion, and our charter is so designed on council having discretion.
And that's -- I'm okay with that. It's just that it seems that for the last 25 years, the council has. So, if we're now moving into a system where the majority of the council has the discretion to decide when and when we don't have a deferral, that's fine. I can live with that. I just want to know that that's -- we're now moving from 25 years of history to a new policy, and I can live with that.
I think what we're doing is a lack of a policy. I mean, we do not have a policy on a deferral. I mean, I think council has the discretion to have a deferral or not. And so, I wouldn't reflect this as the lack of a policy or having a policy or a new policy. I just think it's the lack of a policy and the council discretion that our charter has kind of allowed the council to gather. And certainly, there's, you know, there's history based on this. But your departure from that meeting, it felt different that day because, you know, none of us know where we're going to be in two weeks. And, you know, those of us that were there wanted to vote. And I don't mean to speak for others, but speaking for myself, we never know when we're going to get called away from a meeting. And by granting the deferral for you might have caused someone else to not be able to vote. We don't necessarily know, you know, a week or two ahead of time. So, I certainly hope you don't think it's an affront at you if we just -- if the votes don't line up for you, because I don't think it feels that way. It certainly doesn't feel that way to me. But I just hate to see the council's discretion limited on something like this. That's just why I intend to vote against it. Any other comments or questions?
Mayor, I would urge that that's not the case at all. The council, we have had a policy. We have had a policy, and we're now changing, we're now very formally changing that policy. We're now saying you've got to get five votes. Every -- you have to be concerned about that. We've never had to do that before. I mean, literally, never had to do it before, ever. But we've always -- and if you say you want to make it, you don't want it to be personal, it's hard for me to take it any other way than personal, because it's never happened to anybody else but Councilman Shadid. It's never happened to me. It's never happened to another person sitting on this horseshoe. Not one time has it ever happened. So, if you don't want, if it's not personal, then it's just an amazing coincidence. But I'm really, I'm emotional about it. I think it's very unfair. I think, I'm not sure I understand it. I think it is a line in the sand that does not have to be drawn. And I think much of the conflict that's been going on the last three or four months has been just that. It's just been a line in the sand that's unnecessary. And I, we have prided ourselves, and I've been one that talks about it every time I have an opportunity, about the collegial nature of this group, about the personal relationships in this group. And when I see them start to deteriorate over something I don't even understand, I'm troubled by that. And I hope it isn't personal. But if it isn't, it's an amazing coincidence, it seems to me.
Any other comments?
I just want to say one thing. Even if it is personal, it's, which, even if it is, it's okay. And we just, and I'm afraid that, we talked about in Minneapolis, I'm afraid that, I talked about with Pat, I'm afraid that all of us may have lived in the best of times. We have tremendous adversity heading our way. We've got to work together and paddle the boat together. Whether this passes or fails, it just, it helps me, and I think it'll decrease conflict, and I'm ready to move on. Thanks.
Any other comments before we vote? Got David and Pat?
Yes. First of all, just a couple of questions. The resolution would just provide for a one-meeting delay or continuance, so at the subsequent, the next meeting, we vote. And at that second meeting, no other councilor could request a delay. Could you only get one?
It could be requested at the subsequent meeting, and it'd be your discretion to grant it or not. And at the first op, at the first setting, you would have an automatic continuance unless council moved to suspend the rule by six votes.
Okay.
Excuse me, by two-thirds of the quorum.
Subsequently, at the next meeting, some other councilor could request the same continuance?
Could, yes. Not the same one. It wouldn't be an automatic one.
Oh.
It can only be at the first setting of the document.
That's what I was thinking. That's fine. Okay. Well, if I can continue on, and I know, I'm really looking forward to the other more senior members of the council to provide some guidance, but, I mean, I would support this just to put this behind us and let us get back to the business that I think people elected us to focus on. This has created and is continuing to create a lot of discussion, animosity, and that's not necessary. And if by allowing this, hopefully, it won't be used that often. If this gets it behind us and we can get back to focusing on what we're really supposed to be doing, I'm all for that. And I'll just leave it at that for the time being. Thank you.
Pat, and then Skip.
Your Honor, I would just say that I appreciate Councilman Shadid's remarks. I think they're very mature and on point. We have the authority right now to defer an item anytime we want to. And then, the thread that came through in several of the comments that Councilman Shadid read was for good reason. And I think that's important. I think if we defer something, there ought to be a reason for that deferral, not just because it automatically can put it off for a week, because I think that opens the doors, as I said earlier, for abuse. And I know there's nothing personal here, except I just think that we've functioned this way for years. I probably hold a record for a deferral on this council. I had one item deferred for over two years. And it worked. The people who were objecting died. But anyway, I wouldn't suggest that as a good alternative, but the council went along because there was a reason for that deferral. We had traffic studies to do. We had an opportunity to negotiate a possible settlement. And so, there was valid reasons for that deferral. And I think we've, the council's always been willing to consider valid reasons for a deferral. And when I've made a motion for that, we explained the reason why, and the council went along with it. So, I think that mechanism is available, and it's been used frequently, and it's a standard practice we've had for years around here, and I think we ought to.
All right. Skip?
Well, first of all, I would like to thank Councilman Greenwell in reference to his comments, because I think that goes directly to the heart of this issue.
I'm sorry.
Apologize. I would like to thank Councilman Greenwell and his comments, because I think it goes directly to the heart of this issue, and we all have unfortunately suffered a great deal of controversy, negative as it may be. It has been real that what happened here several weeks ago was something that was unprecedented. And the press can't change it. The citizens can't change it. The only body that can change what happened and make the days go better from here on out is us. Whether or not you call it personal, whether or not it's about, you know, when you ask for a continuance and I may not like it, you know, to me, that's all downsizing the issue. This issue blew up in a way that, you know, was just, you know, it was very unfortunate for all of us. But we did it. We created that. And when we talk about this issue of continuances, as Councilman Lyons said, and I have been the recipient also, but when it's something that's Ward Pacific, I don't think none of us pay attention to if Councilman Kelly, if it's in Ward Seven, he wants to defer this for another, you know, 30 days, 90 days. You know, it's been a respected granting of that continuance, just like Councilman Lyons. If he continued something, deferred something for a year, that's in his ward, it's something that is mindful to him, and he has oversight over it, and the citizens in his district and his ward is coming directly to him. The problem, I think, is, is when we had this issue that's a global issue, that's all over the city of Oklahoma City, and one of us may have some questions about it or have some issues with it, and would the rest of us know from behind-the-scenes politicking that that individual is against it? Or Councilman Kelly may not be supporting this, but if he asks for a continuance, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to support it. And I think that's the very heart of this issue. And I think the one time, the first setting in reference to this ordinance, I just think it goes a lot further for all of us to put some things behind us and say, you know, okay, this is what we'll do. But at the same time, when the issue comes up, and at some point in time, if either one of us still asks for a continuance, there's a respect and cordiality again that, you know, we're looking in the face of. And I just think it's not going to change, you know, that. So, in an effort to try to bring about some civility on this issue, I just, I don't know why you wouldn't support it. If we're talking about moving forward in a way that we can all work together and have some harmony and stop bickering over a little issue about whether or not this councilman asked for a continuance, and you know that his reasoning, your back of your mind is the reason why he's asking for a continuance is because he wants to investigate some more information about an issue, or you feel like that he don't support it, so you're not going to give him a little bit of support by allowing for the continuance. And I just think that it's all about, you know, those type of issues. If it's Ward Pacific, if it's in Ward Six, if it's in Ward Seven, Ward Eight, none of us is going to sit here and challenge each individual councilman about an issue in his or her particular ward. I haven't seen it one time since I've been here on this council. Not one time. And I think this is a way that we can put some global, you know, softening to this whole issue and never have to really bring this issue back again.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, Larry?
I wouldn't get to say much, but David just said he depreciates some counsel from somebody that's been around a while. Other than, Nick and I have been around this system the longest. Pete, of course, goes back to a previous life, and he was very active and very involved. So, he's really the senior guy. From my perspective, having been here since 2001, I don't think that this is needed, and I'm not going to support it.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Councilman Shadid, you want to make a motion? Second? All right. Motion is to, on Item F for the OCMF A. And the motion fails. Four or five. Well, adjourn the OCMF A, Communities Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. And we have the same issue on Item B, so why don't we have a motion then on Item, the PPA, Item A, and then we'll vote on Item B separately?
No voting.
All right. Cast your votes on Item A of the PPA. And it passed unanimously. Then Item B, Councilman Shadid, you want to make a motion? Need a second? Okay. Item, the B of the PPA is identical to Item F of the OCMF A. Everyone clear on what we're voting on? All right. Cast your votes. A. Everyone clear on what we're voting on? All right. Cast your votes. And the motion fails. Five to four. Adjourn the OCPPA. Convene the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. We have three items. Any comments or questions on the EAT? All right. Looks like we're ready to go. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT, and reconvene the council meeting with the consent document. All right. Are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a couple minor questions on some of the items. Item Three, L. One, item U as a uniform, and then item AP.
AP?
AP, Papa, Alpha Papa.
All right. Anybody else?
Mayor, if I could just mention items L. One and Two.
Certainly. Anybody else?
Oh.
All right. Pat, you want to get started?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item Three is a, sets for hearing a zoning change, and it's to develop a community garden. And I would like to get some clarification on what constraints are involved in putting in a community garden. It seems like having a PUD is a little bit overkill.
I'm sorry, what item is, are you referring to?
Well, actually, the item just brought to my attention, Rob. It's not an item that is to be discussed today necessarily. But it calls for a PUD for a community garden. And it's an R. One area. And I was curious as to what the zoning constraints, if any, there are on community gardens, what zones are they appropriate for?
Part of the issue is the selling the produce out of the garden, because it's a residentially zoned property. You know, I, it may be appropriate to meet with you and talk to you about that.
I appreciate that. I need some guidance, because it seems like a community garden in an R. One area, R. One area, absent its commercial use, which would then make it not a community garden, in my viewpoint. We just need some clarification. As they become more popular, and more people wanted to do that, we need to have a clear understanding what our citizens can do without additional permission from the city.
I'll be happy to get additional information. We can meet, talk.
Thank you. Now, item L. One, this is a great project. It has to do with the Skywalker Bridge that we're going to build. But the concern is me is we're allocating over a million dollars from the 2007 general obligation fund, bond fund, Proposition Number One, streets unlisted, to support this project. And we are dealing with a perception among, I think, the people who don't live down, or work downtown, that all our money's being spent downtown. And I know that's not true, because we have a lot of street projects going on all over the city that aren't downtown. But the perception is pretty strong that the city council has favored downtown. And I was curious if there's any other source of funds that we could use to provide the additional money necessary to complete the Skywalker Bridge, Skydance Bridge, whatever it's called.
We didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We didn't identify any. We thought that that was probably the only funding source we had to get this contract awarded. We have, unfortunately, a very tight window of opportunity with ODOT to get this constructed. And if it doesn't go now, it may not go.
How much of the unlisted funds from this proposition will be devoted to this project? We've got a million dollars coming out of it now.
Of unlisted?
Unlisted, yeah. Because the unlisted money is money that we've been able to use to solve some, you know.
Right. I understand.
Rather significant residential problems that weren't included in the O-Bond program.
Councilman, would you repeat your question?
Well, my question is, I didn't like the idea of taking a million dollars out of the unlisted street fund. If we do, how much money's left in there?
In the unlisted?
Yes.
I don't know. I'd have to find that out and get that information for you.
Well, we talked about it, Dennis. It was just under a million, those remainder. Did we talk about?
Yeah, there was probably about, there's probably about 1.9 million, 1.8, 1.9 million of unlisted that we have, that we've sold in 2008, nine, and 10. So this leaves us about 900,000.
So we're taking over half the money out of this?
About half, right.
Okay. I wish there was another source of funds, because I think we've got some serious street problems in the residential areas, that we've been able to use some of this money to address. And it's unfortunate that we can't continue to do that that we have before. Item U is a project that provides some clearance of some drainage control systems. And it's a rehabilitation program for the city drainage channels. And to a large extent, not, I'm not sure how large in extent, but we do use natural creeks as part of our drainage system. And we have no process that allows us to maintain those creeks as free-flowing devices. And we have some concern among our citizens, that with all the construction and development we've experienced, that we have additional runoff because of the concrete and the roofs and the paving. And that we've not addressed that problem significantly. And so I would suggest that we give some consideration to citywide drainage study, to see about the adequacy of those creeks, using those creeks as, as an opportunity to handle stormwater, and whether we need to do something different than we've been doing in the past. Because we have some areas where the creeks become clogged with fallen trees and things, and they no longer do the job they were intended to do. So I just think it's something we need to look into.
Pat, if I can make a tag on to a comment for that, Pat, because I've got a number of them in my ward that I've dealt with over the years. And the problem is, is the initial development of the housing addition allowed the developer to utilize an existing creek or a drain. They cleaned it up, they made it flow good, and the calculations were done, and they said, yes, this will handle the runoff. The problem is, nobody maintains that over the years. And it gets overgrown, and the trees grow up, and then at some point it starts eroding. And the only solution at some point is when we, if we get to the point where we have to do something, then we're going to go in and concrete line it. And people, they like it because it solved the problem, but they don't like the way it looks.
Exactly.
I think another part of that study that you're asking is, should we change our development regulations to make these developers go ahead and line these creeks, and get them to where they're going to sustain themselves long-term, so that the citizens, 10, 15, 20 years after they move in, are not complaining about the erosion of these creeks? If they're going to be, if we allow the developer to use, utilize that for runoff, and not, not put in pipes and all that kind of stuff, then we ought to have some way to have a long-term solution to the maintenance of that creek.
I am.
And I know that the laws, the ordinances are there, saying the homeowners association is responsible for maintaining the green belt area, or whatever it is. But we all know that 20 years into a residential addition, the homeowners are not going to maintain it. They don't, they may not even have an association at that point in time, so.
And a lot of times, they feel that the problems are either upstream or downstream from their individual development. They may clean out their half-mile or whatever, but the adjacent creeks, both upstream and downstream, may contribute to the problem as well. I just think we just need to look at this problem from a long-range standpoint, an overall standpoint, to address the problem. Because the experience we had last year was a 500-year flood. I understand that was well beyond design standards, a unique event. But it did cause some flooding, and caused some significant damage to people's homes. And I just think we just need to be able to assure the people that we're doing what is necessary to protect their property.
Okay.
Item AP, and this is a, renews a agreement with the MAPS III implementation and the Court of Shore. Now, I wanted to make sure that we could use the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority for projects in MAPS III. We talk about Court of Shore a lot in here. I know we've got an agreement with Court of Shore, but it didn't mention MAPS III up here. And I hope that we continue to be able to use the Urban Renewal to acquire any property we have to in MAPS III.
That's what we're doing. This continues, this is a renewal of agreement we have for Urban Renewal, who's acquiring the property for us on MAPS III. That's what this is.
Okay. But it mentions Court of Shore as well. I want to make sure it wasn't limited to Court of Shore. That's all I.
No, it's actually not. Urban Renewal is acquiring some property for Court of Shore, but that's not what the, Urban Renewal's doing that. On our behalf, they are acquiring the property for the MAPS III projects.
All right. Meg?
Pat has already mentioned item L. One, but I just wanted to make sure that our viewers were aware that in this item, we actually are awarding the contract for the construction of the Skydance Bridge. So we will begin to see, you know, activity on this really unique and iconic project very quickly.
And if you read the paper this morning, the ODOT has awarded their remaining contracts on I-40, and they're anticipating a completion date, and having traffic over on the new I-40 by April. And it's anticipated that this bridge will be completed January, February?
January, February timeframe. And if you look, the ODOT contract does allow for bonuses for them to complete early. So their project could, could be completed as early as late December, early January.
Great. Do we have those same bonuses, Dennis, in our contract to get the bridge completed as quickly as possible?
We have, yes. We have very similar milestones.
But ODOT paid for those, which, so we did not pay for that. ODOT, AODOT paid for those. Dennis did a nice job negotiating that.
Is that $25,000 a day?
Yes, up to 100 days. So they're, they're willing to pay an extra $2.5 million to get finished 100 days sooner than the April date that Mr. Couch mentioned.
That's not on our contract. That's on the, on the contract.
How much is the contract?
I mean, how much do we pay as an incentive to, to complete the project earlier, on, on the city side?
Well, as Mr. Couch said, ODOT is providing $400,000 for our contract, for our contract, for them to get through by the milestone that they need, which is basically December.
There are different phases in, in the project. Let me, let's be clear. The $2.5 million is ODOT's deal on the, on the construction of the project. And so that's, that's their issue. And I, I think, speaking, not trying to speak on behalf of ODOT, but I know that the rationale is that if they get a, a issue on that bridge, $2.5 million could be a repair that they do. So they're very, they're very anxious to, to get off the old, the old cross town. And so that's what they're doing. To make sure that the bridge didn't slow down their ability to finish I-40 and to get it open, they put in very strong disincentives, and also incentives to make it happen. And ODOT agreed to fund those incentives on the pedestrian bridge portion of it.
Out of all those incentives, approximately how much of that came from the stimulus fund?
I can't answer that.
But would you say a large percentage of it did? Or a good portion?
I don't know.
I don't, I don't, I don't have a feel for that either. I don't know.
Okay. Larry?
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. The reason we're doing this bridge is that when the relocation was determined, didn't the Federal Highway Administration say you have to have a pedestrian bridge over the new relocated I-40?
Exactly. And that's a very good point you brought up. There was a mitigation plan that was created, and it evolved into a formal document called a Record of Decision. And in that Record of Decision, required a pedestrian bridge to link those, those two, both sides of the interstate. It did not have to be an iconic pedestrian bridge.
We, as citizens, decided to make it as, make it an iconic bridge. And that's created the need for the funding that we're talking about.
And ODOT is basically paying for the bridge, the base bridge, and we are paying for the, the art component, the iconic piece of that.
All right. Larry? I'm sorry, David?
Could a situation occur for I-40, the new I-40 is completed, but they don't open it until the Skydance Bridge is completed?
Boy, we're, we're really doing everything we can, so that would not be the situation. That would not be a good situation. And the way it's set up right now, you know, we have, we have, we have a timeframe in place to get it completed. The critical, the critical piece is in by December, and they're not looking until April. So it doesn't appear that it's going to be a problem. We've got some, ODOT wouldn't agree that we have time, some contingency time in there, but it, but it appears that we do. So we should be fine.
Any other comments or questions on the?
It just seems like a lot of, it just seems like a lot of hassle and a lot of money being spent on something that doesn't go anywhere and doesn't connect anything. I mean, we've already made sure that didn't happen, by the way we dealt with the MAPS priority thing. You know, here we are, wrestling about a bridge that doesn't go anywhere, doesn't hook to anything on either end. And we made sure of that. So we're going to spend time here today talking about spending all this money over something that trivial. Seems ridiculous to me.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the consent document?
Yes, may I have given notice for O?
For O?
Yes, sir.
All right. What are your comments on O?
Well, first of all, I would like to set the record straight in reference to some of the press statements that's been made as a result of, of a death that occurred at, on MLK and approximately Northeast 23rd in the area. Back in October of 2010, unfortunately, within a week, there were three individuals who were hit by vehicles in the Northeast 23rd Street area. One at 23rd and Granada, one was in the area at 20th and MLK. But unfortunately, the city was kind of given a black eye on the basis that these deaths was, was caused because of the lack of sidewalks in an area that was approximately a block, I'd say, or a little less, right on the, the east side of CVS that's situated at 23rd and MLK. Debbie Martin and myself, after these unfortunate incidents, we went to the Charles Atkins Center back in November of 2010, and we talked to the, to the manager. And she advised us that 75% of the residents there use some type of handicap, you know, assistance from walkers to wheelchairs and the motorized wheelchairs. And that a lot of them trans, you know, they, their movement is from the residence hall to the grocery store and to the CVS. And we were trying to figure out how could these three incidents happen the way they did? Because there is sidewalks, except there is a gap between Sonic and to MLK, I would say, to 23rd Street. One of the persons that was killed was not in a sidewalk issue at all. It was in the middle of the street, crossing 23rd Street, coming from the south going to the north, which was almost a block and a half away from this particular location. And I just want to set the record straight that, you know, there was some issues, but nobody really never paid any attention to the traffic, to the speed of these individual cars. And the one incident that happened on the sidewalk area was the motorized wheelchair, when she was trying to navigate from a smooth surface onto a grassy knoll area, the motorized wheelchair turned over, and it happened to turn over and landed in the lane of traffic, and a truck hit the individual. We have been aggressively trying to address that particular issue with CVS, the drugstore, with no positive response from them. And through one of our committees, and through Mr. Clowers, we have been able to find a source to create a sidewalk in that particular area. So Dennis, could you tell us exactly where that would be in the timeframe of it?
Be glad to. First of all, I'd like to quote at the Planning Department for identifying the grant funds that we're using to fund a change order to an existing contract that we're doing in some other areas. There, as you mentioned, there's a gap between the Sonic location, which is just south of the CVS Pharmacy, and the sidewalk that runs along 23rd Street. It's probably about 200 feet long. It's not just a matter of going out and sending some forms and laying down some concrete, because the grade from the CVS parking lot down to the street is very steep. So this will involve having to reconstruct a short retaining wall and the sidewalk. We've got the contractor set up and ready to go with this. As soon as the item's approved today, then we can get him started. They should start very soon.
Okay. And I also would like to thank Ms. Pam Henry, who is the chairman of the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns, of some of the dialogue and the educational programs that she's put together to try to educate these, a lot of the citizens who are confined to wheelchairs, as it relates to the safety and the use of these on a public street. And I think that's one of the challenges that has to be addressed in the future, is that a lot of people think that these, these type of motorized wheelchairs will fit, you know, within traffic. And it's a very dangerous situation to have those type of wheelchairs out in, in regular. out in regular traffic. But at least we have been able to address that particular issue. But I wanted to at least make the record clear that it wasn't the city's fault that three individuals' lives was lost in the 23rd and MLK area because of sidewalks, because there are sidewalks, it's just that sometimes people have taken things a little bit farther than what, where they should be, and the traffic was not a major issue that never was brought up after these incidents. And I think that's an issue that needs to be seriously addressed in the 23rd Street area is the traffic. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that, just on that? Do we have easily accessible data that talks about pedestrian struck and bicyclist struck? I mean, can we, after a year and a half, the Trails and Sidewalks Committee really, we've got to get going, and they don't know where to put the 68 miles of sidewalks. I mean, that data seems like data that we should have to help guide where to put those 68 miles of sidewalks. Is that available, or how can we get that?
I would guess there's data available through the Police Department. I don't know how readily available it is, but we can, we'll look into that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about the consent docket? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to the concurrence docket.
Are there any individual considerations on the concurrence docket?
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight begins a series of items that require a separate vote. Starts with a series of zoning cases. First is in Ward one, it's an ABC issue at 7640 Northwest Expressway. Gary, you been working on this one?
Yes, this is a restaurant and a new restaurant in a place where there was already a restaurant, and it's in a large shopping center. Has anybody signed up to speak against this today?
One person who's indicated she'd like to speak. Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
Mandy Hobson. I'm the owner of that particular restaurant, and I just wanted to ask if it is passed, that we have an emergency clause added to that, because we've, we've been losing $2,000 a day because we had to pull our beer, because we didn't realize that we had to have what we're voting on today. And so we would just like to be able to start selling it as quickly as possible, because we have been open and running for over six months. And since we've had to pull this to get this, like I said, we've lost, not 2,000 a day, 2,000 a week, just in sales. So that's all I'm asking for, is if it's approved, that we get that added so we can start selling it today.
As I said, this was an existing restaurant that went out of business, and they've moved into this area here, so I'll move the item.
All right. Cast your votes on the item. Passed unanimously.
I'll move the emergency.
Cast your votes on the emergency. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2, the zoning case in Ward seven. It's at 310 and 312 West Britton Road. It's currently our one single family. It would become a C4 general commercial district. Skip?
I haven't received any calls. This is the applicant here.
Sorry.
Marcus Uday, 12225 Bravada Court, Edmond, Oklahoma.
And what is the project?
The current plan is for a daycare facility.
Daycare facility?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I move that we approve this.
Second.
Any other comments or questions on item 8A2? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8A3. It's a zoning case, also in Ward seven, at 11712 North I-35 Service Road. It's a C3 community commercial district, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. Skip?
I believe, Dennis, is this yours? Before you say anything, I recognize the applicant now, and we, we had a very good conversation in reference to this project. I think the planning commission, the planning commission approved it without any protest, and so we're ready to move on with it. Best wishes.
We would request the emergency if you all approve it.
Okay. Move it.
Second.
Okay, we're voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Emergency?
Thank you.
All right, voting on the emergency for item 8A3, and it passes 8-0.
Okay, Mr. Purcell.
On to item 8B. These are items that have come to us from the Traffic Commission. First is in Ward two, and it has to do with one-way streets largely in the area of Northwest 23rd, 24th, and Miller. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
I understand that both one and two were requested by the school principal. I'd move that they be approved.
All right, we're voting on item 8B1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B2 is another one-way street issue. It's also in Ward two, and it's in this very similar neighborhood, I guess, over near North Ross Avenue, North Miller Avenue and 24th Street.
Move it.
All right, cast your votes on item 8B2. Passed unanimously. Item 8C is a public hearing. This would bring us into compliance with state law, and it has to do with alcoholic and low-point beverages. Any comments or questions on this item? Has anyone signed up to speak? They have not.
I have a question on this, if maybe legal, Mayor.
Okay. Here we go.
And this is the, on the property lines of a school and an establishment that sells alcoholic beverages, what are we going to do with the businesses in the Bricktown area, or is there a policy being addressed to address the concerns of a couple of establishments that's in the Bricktown area that has a school that's within the proximity of this 300-foot move?
You, you-
My question is, are we addressing that issue to try to come forth with something, or do we have to wait on the legislature to address that?
We have to wait on the legislature to address that. Our language just copies the state statute. The state has preempted the field, so we have to have a legislative amendment. There was actually one out there last year that would have addressed that, but it didn't pass. But that would have to be a legislative issue.
There was an attempt to do it administratively through the ABLE Commission, and they did not, they were not successful to do that, so it does require a legislative fix.
Will that be on our legislative agenda to clarify this, or?
Well, that hasn't been drafted yet, but I anticipate that it would be.
Well, Jim, if the ordinance that we have, if a church moves to an area where there's alcohol being sold within the 300 feet, there's, I mean, this wouldn't apply, right?
That's correct.
Well-
But if the church moves in and then somebody else, then they apply for the new alcohol license. Or if that place went out of business and somebody else tried to reopen it, then it would kick in.
But if, if a church or a school moved to an area where there's alcohol already being sold, and it's within the 300 feet?
Right.
They move, their licenses have already been granted-
Right.
-and business is conducted there.
That's correct. And that's what's happening in Bricktown. Because that, the University of Central Oklahoma has purchased the Oklahoma Hardware Building, that doesn't have an effect on existing businesses down there. It has an effect on now, on those that are trying to establish new alcohol-related businesses within that area.
Any other comments on item 8C? We have a motion? We have a motion on 8C. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D is a public hearing. This has to do with our spay-and-neuter fund that we've been working on.
Second.
All right, comments or questions on item 8D? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E has to do with redistricting, and Jane Abraham is here for a presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jane Abraham, Community and Government Affairs Manager in the City Manager's Office, and I'm just going to talk briefly about the redistricting ordinance that is on for introduction today. First of all, we started off with the 2010 census. There were several changes, many changes, to Oklahoma City's population base. In 2000, we had, our population was 506,132, and then we increased to 5,799 in 2010, which was a 14.6% increase over 10 years. However, this growth was not evenly distributed throughout the city, which is why we need to look at redistricting the wards. So the next table shows the percent change that occurred in each ward with the current boundaries as they are drawn. And as you can see, Ward eight had the most growth and increased 22% above what would be the ideal average population for each ward. The legal requirements behind this are both in Oklahoma City Charter and in federal law. But first, in dealing with the Charter, it states that when drawing the boundaries, they must be adjusted so as to equalize the population as near as practicable. And then the federal requirements are in the United States Constitution in terms of keeping with the one-person-one-vote principle, that cities must provide each qualified voter an equal opportunity to participate in municipal elections. There's also additional guidance with case law, et cetera, stating that wards should be as geographically compact as possible, and they must be contiguous, which is a little bit of a challenge with some areas of Oklahoma City, because we surround other incorporated areas, and so that presents some challenges when we're looking at trying to redraw our There were other priorities and considerations that were taken into account. We tried to balance the population within plus or minus 2% of the average, because we wanted to keep the neighborhoods as whole as possible and not split them between wards, and also use logical boundaries that made sense to people, you know, major roads, section line roads and major streets, so that areas could be easily identified. In addition, we tried to place areas together that had a unified identity, such as Capitol Hill and Automobile Alley. So this is the current map that you're looking at now. The colors represent the existing wards, and the lines represent the proposed new boundaries. So that sort of identifies the changes that you can see with the different wards. And we tried to keep, also keep the changes as minimal as possible to not, I guess, disrupt the current map or the current wards in the way that they're currently drawn. And then the next map just shows, that's when you just take out the lines and the previous boundaries, this would be the way the new map would look under the current proposal. So the percent change with the new ward boundaries as they're drawn, they're all within plus or minus 2%, and to get as close as possible to the ideal average, which is 72,500 people. So the approval process that we'll go through, the ordinance is being introduced today. There's a public meeting to be held next Tuesday on August 9th at 6 o'clock PM in the council chambers. There will be a public hearing at this regular city council meeting on the 16th with adoption of the ordinance on the 30th. There's no emergency attached to this ordinance, so the new ward boundaries would become effective 30 days after that, on September 30th. So, is there any questions?
Any comments or questions for Jane on the redistricting process? Yeah, Pat?
Yeah, thank you. Just a comment, and maybe a question also. Will you make the same presentation at Tuesday night?
Yes, I will.
I think it's excellent presentation, I think, that would benefit our citizens who attend there.
All right, thank you.
I want to give a thanks to Dan Bromlett. Dan Bromlett worked last week very tirelessly to get the legal descriptions put together on this. It was supposed to be done by a computer program, and it didn't work out, and Dan had to handwrite the legal descriptions on that, and that wasn't a task he was planning on doing last week, and he stepped up and got it done, so I appreciate that, Dan.
I have a question. The new ward boundaries become effective September 30th. If I have a representative on one of the city commissions representing Ward eight, and he doesn't live in the new Ward eight, is he going to be, need to be replaced September 30th, or can he continue to serve till the end of his term?
Should be replaced.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on redistricting? Yeah, Ed?
A little bit of a concern, and that's if you look over the last 10 years, who lost the greatest population? It would be Ward seven, which we took care of, but also Ward two and Ward six. And we're starting out with the greatest deficit being in Ward two and Ward six before we start the next decade. Ward six is coming in by the skin of our teeth. It has to be 2%, and we're at 1.98. And I know, I know we had some tweaking there at the end of the day two weeks ago, so that's just a concern. Do you want to mention the 10 Ward?
My, I share the concern that Councilman Shadid does, that two of the three wards that were the, that grew the slowest are starting out with lower populations than other wards that grew the fastest. For example, the portion in Ward one that grew the, is where most, a great deal of the growth was in Ward eight, that ward's already starting out 1.67 above. I mean, it's, it seems to me that not enough time was spent on that aspect of it. Secondly, I regret we didn't take a serious look, and I regret not bringing forward a full-blown map now, since collegiality is out the window. I, even though I know that it doesn't have the votes, I regret not bringing forward a full-blown 10 Ward map, because I believe we should go to 10 wards. I think the time has come. Our districts are much larger than state senate districts. Geographically, they're huge in certain cases. The differences of the populations in the wards are so diverse in some cases that we could have, we could have accommodated that by spending a little time looking at a 10 Ward situation. It's just a rush to do something that I'm not sure we need to be that big a hurry to do.
All right, any other comments or questions on the redistricting process? Questions for Jane? Jane, thank you for leading the charge on this.
Okay, thank you.
How about a motion then on the, as the item is introduced today?
Seven.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And again, we will be having a public meeting on this. Is it Tuesday night, Jim?
I believe, yes, it's a week from tonight.
A week from tonight. There will be a public meeting, and that will take place-
Right here.
-here in this city council chamber. All right, we're on to item 8F. This comes to us from the Traffic Commission. I think Dennis is going to be here to give a short presentation.
Mayor and Council, there are six companies that provide horse-drawn carriage service to the Bricktown and downtown area. At the May Traffic Commission meeting, a representative from one of those companies appeared under Says to be Heard to express some concern about horses being used for a couple of the other companies that were not properly shod. So the traffic management staff worked with, and by the way, the rep from the one company did bring a petition signed by the other three companies who do shoe their horses for this use. They also had a letter from a veterinarian and from a farrier that supported the fact that we should be requiring horses that are, that are walking on street pavement to have proper shoes.
Do we know if other cities have this requirement already?
I do not.
Could you check before, and it's just being introduced today, could you check?
Sure.
I guess I'd like that information. And is it a safety issue? What is the reason that we're, that there's a difference between having a horse, are these horseshoes that we're talking about, first of all?
Yes, horseshoes, but, and the ordinance that we're proposing gives them options of materials that they can use. They don't have to use steel. There's another option in the draft ordinance.
And this is, this is reducing the chances of slippage by a horse?
Slippage and also, I guess, wear and tear on their hooves. I think that was the main concern. And that was the concern expressed in the letter from the veterinarian and the farrier. And that was the concern expressed in the letter from the veterinarian and the farrier as well.
I see. So, is, I guess I'd like to be clear, is it a safety issue, or is it an animal welfare issue?
I would say it's one animal welfare issue more than a safety issue.
Okay.
But I'll be glad to check with some other cities.
Just when you think you've dealt with every issue at least once, comes horseshoes on the horses in Bricktown. All right, yeah, I'd love to have some more information so we can kind of give this the consideration it deserves. Any other questions for Dennis while he's here today? All right, how about a motion then? We're voting on item 8F.
Move it.
Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item 8G? Anyone signed up?
No.
No one has signed up. Looks like we're ready to go.
Move the item.
Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8H is unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8H? This is a public hearing. No one has signed up? All right, guess we're ready to go. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. On item 8I, it's a revocable right-of-way permit for the Mustache Bash Block Party that will take place in Ward 7. Skip's not here. Is there anyone here representing this organization or knows anything about this event that wants to speak?
No.
All right, guessing we're ready to go. Cast your votes on item 8I, it passed unanimously. Item 8J, I understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
All right, how about a motion then on item 8J?
Move it.
Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8K, I understand we do not need executive session? How about a motion then on item 8K?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We do need executive session, all right.
Move it to executive session.
All right, so we're now voting on item 8K to move it to executive session, and that item is moved. Item 8L is claims recommended for denial. We have one person that has signed up to speak.
Good morning.
Good morning. You might want to pull the microphone down a little bit, if you give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Diana McDaniel, and I reside at 1426 Northwest 98th Street, Oklahoma City.
All right, and so your item is item E here, and can you tell us more about this issue?
Well, I, my issue is, is I was parked in my driveway in my home, and there was no damage to the rear of my vehicle. When I parked my vehicle, and the next morning, I arrived at work, and I went to load into the back of my truck, because as a food director for the church, I take food back and forth to my buildings, and I noticed this damage on my tailgate. And at that point, the only thing that I, that could have damaged my truck that morning was, in my knowledge, would have been the trash truck, because my neighbor parks his van close, and then he puts his trash cans right beside the back of my truck. And I have no houses across the street from me, because I live right across from an empty lot, so no one could have backed into my truck, leaving their home that morning. And I, to my knowledge, I was in my house at the time that the trash truck came through, so I did not physically see it. But the damage, I don't believe that could have happened from, even if a car would have backed into the back of my truck. I mean, the pictures show that it looks like that it was scraped by something tall.
Okay, so you're thinking is the trash truck?
I do believe that's what it did.
Damaged your vehicle?
I have on my camera pictures of my neighbor's van, where he parks his van, and where he puts his trash cans, and the vision across the street where there's no houses located there. But I do have written statements from the church where I was at visitation that night until 8:00, and my truck was parked in our, we call it the first house, which is the house that we own. And I was up in the driveway because it was a hailstorm that night, and I was afraid that my truck was going to get held on. So, the music pastor and the, two of the custodians see my vehicle that night, and I went straight from there to my house. And then, when I left my home and came to work, so I don't, I was not out in, driving up and down the street for, I mean, I live, you know, just mile, you know, a mile or two from the church. So, I mean, in my knowledge, I don't see anything else that could have done the damage to my vehicle.
Right, okay.
And I'm not saying that it was a malicious thing, and the lady from the city told me that he didn't hear the damage. Well, I've sit out in front of my house in the morning since this happened, and the trucks are loud, and he has his radio going really loud, too, and I don't see that he could have heard it if it just scraped it. That wasn't a loud noise.
Okay, let's get some direction from our legal staff.
This is a question of fact. You could pay it, we recommend it for denial, because no one actually observed the city trash truck damaging her vehicle. The driver had no knowledge that her vehicle had been damaged, and our employee that took these photos, I believe our employee took these photos later on in June, and he testified, or his statement is, it appears to be that the paint transfer was white, and the power arm on the city trash trucks is yellow, or safety yellow, but it is a question of fact.
So, council does technically have discretion?
Correct.
And Diana, you know, the council's discretion, we really want to be responsible, if we feel like we are.
I have more comments here. I sit out in front this morning, and the paint on the, on that little deal is not there. It's worn off, so there is no yellow paint on the tip of that arm.
Was your car in the street, or was it in the driveway?
It was in the driveway. I have a little car that's parked in the front, and so I'm parked behind it, so I'm just right at the very edge of the driveway. And I have pictures showing how my truck sits in the driveway.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing the pictures. You want to bring it by?
And it shows that there's no drive behind my car either. It's an empty lot.
Are you trying to say that the city vehicle, in passing the edge of your truck, put this indenture in the truck?
My theory is, the way that van, it's a handicap accessible van, and he parks right on the curb there, and he puts it close to my truck, and I believe that the worker had to kind of come around that van a little bit to get to the trash dumpster, and when he was pulling out and setting it down, that's when the damage happened. And that's my theory.
Are there any other theories?
Either that, or his, his mirror, but that didn't have, I mean, it didn't really look like that to me. But I watched him dump the trash, and, I mean, I don't think that damage could have happened from a vehicle in a different type of way, because the way it is, it comes up and then it goes down. And there's a little nick in my trailer hitch protector where it was cut with something sharp.
The reason she thinks, the reason she thinks it was the trash truck's arm coming down to pick up the container was because her neighbor's van was parked right next to the curb next to her driveway. And then, his, I believe it was his trash containers were right behind her truck.
Okay.
So, that's why she thinks that it was the city truck that did it.
So, you're saying that someone created a difficult area for the truck to even do its job, right?
Yes, sir.
And just because of that space that was intruded, that was, it impeded the operation of the truck, that he had to hit your truck in order to pick up the truck?
I believe he may have accidentally injured my vehicle, and not knowing it, because he had the radio going loudly, and there's a lot, there wasn't a lot of space there.
Yeah, but, and the reason why it wasn't a lot of space there is because
My neighbor.
You and your neighbor created an area that shortened the space for the truck to do its job.
I put my trash dumpsters on the other side. My neighbor happened to put his trash dumpsters there. I noticed the next morning, because I had to move his trash dumpsters, so I could back out, because I was afraid I would clip the trash can.
Okay. Now, I'd like to recommend that we pulled this to be voted on separately. So, why don't we vote on the other items, and then we can vote on Diana's issue as a separate issue? Fair enough? How about a motion then on item 8L, A through D and F through I? Okay. Well, come on up, we'll deal with yours at this point, too.
Thank you.
Sure, we'll need your name and address for the record.
My name's Michael Porter. I represent Laura Porter, who's on there. We live at 815, or 915 Patco Avenue. It's got a Yukon address, but it is Oklahoma City. I may let her give a few facts on this matter, but I have some problems with the accident report that you've probably been given, as well as the report that's been given to you regarding this particular accident. The important parts to me are, there's a statement in here that says it needs to be reasonable and prudent, otherwise you don't owe a duty to anyone driving on the street. And our position is that it's not reasonable and prudent to make an assumption that somebody is making a left turn where there's no place to make a left turn, and there's no curb cuts available to make a left turn in a location. She was making a right turn, veered to the left a bit, and was struck by an Oklahoma City police officer on a motorcycle. The police report, there's a crime incident report that indicates that her signal light was not operational, or they didn't see a signal light on. The officer who was involved in the accident said the same thing. However, no one bothered to check in the vehicle. Of course, when you turn your car off, your signal lights don't work. You walk up to a car, signal light's not on, that's not an assumption that it wasn't functioning. He said he didn't see one. In addition, he was passing on the right. And, you know, one report says, well, she struck him. Your report to you says that he struck her. I don't know if you saw any pictures or not, but it's very obvious that it wasn't just the front bumper of her car that made contact with his police motorcycle. There is a scratch and a gouge in her wheel.
Are there pictures available to us of this?
I have some pictures, if you want to look at them. We submitted pictures to the city, the same pictures.
We have photos, and would have had them ready if we had known the claimant was going to appear.
Okay, well, just, give us a moment then to kind of look through the pictures.
Certainly.
Can you kind of describe in exact, so we're at a, we're at a four-way intersection?
We're at a, what's a three-lane street, Joe Carter Drive, and she was turning into Flaming Leaf's, Flaming Leaf's Alley.
Okay.
I don't know what's across the street, some kind of building with a blue awning on it. It's behind the Bricktown Ballpark. You want to tell them?
Right.
It's right across the street from IHOP. There's a gated lot over there where I have to park for work, so.
Okay, and so it's a three-lane street, two lanes are going one way, or two lanes are going one way and one?
One in each direction with a center left-turn lane.
Okay, and you're in which lane?
I am in the right lane.
You're in the right lane, and you're turning?
You're going to turn right.
I'm turning right.
So, you're in the right lane, turning right?
Yes.
And the, and the police officer was moving in which direction?
He was moving to the right of me as well, going this way, the same way I was going.
So, you're going in the same direction, sharing a lane?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it's a single lane.
And so, the police officer is passing on the right, did not know you were turning into the right, or had, and struck as you turned in, the police officer came up on the right?
Yes.
As you slowed down to turn to the right?
Yes.
The police officer passed you on the right, and so the collision occurred?
Yes.
Okay, I think I have an understanding now of what we're talking about. Give us a moment then to look at the pictures, then, if you don't mind.
Yes, Amy Quonk, Municipal Counselor's Office. And the reason why this was recommended for denial was because of the photographs submitted by the claimant. In addition to the police report, it all suggested that Ms. Porter had, must have had to have pulled in the middle turn lane, because there's only one lane of traffic on each side, and there's a middle turn lane. And the officer indicated in his report that Ms. Porter had entered the middle turn lane in action that would suggest she was turning left, and no turn signal was used to indicate either direction of turn. For the officer to have sufficient clearance on the right in a single lane of traffic, Ms. Porter would have had to have entered the middle lane, middle turn lane. The officer's motorcycle was hit on the back-left tire, and Ms. Porter's vehicle had damage to the right front bumper, indicating that the officer was almost past Ms. Porter by the time she turned right. Yes, the officer was injured. He was thrown. His motorcycle skidded 40 feet. He was taken to the hospital with injuries to his arm and leg. Ms. Porter was, the cause of the accident was attributed to Ms. Porter's improper turn from the wrong lane. I don't know that a citation was actually issued.
She can answer then.
Nope.
Well, were you in the right lane?
In the middle lane.
I was in the right lane.
Okay. Was the car moved after the collision? Did you back up? Did you go forward?
No, it stayed where it was.
Because I'm looking at the pictures, and it kind of does look like you're coming from the middle lane, or maybe had at least straddled it. Does it look that way to you?
To turn right into that parking lot there?
Uh huh.
You have to make somewhat of a wide turn, because if not, you're going to clip that curb. Regardless, though, my car was not fully in that turn lane, so.
Okay. All right, is there, I forget which way these were going. This way?
This way.
This way?
Those are going that way.
These are going that way, all right.
So, was there a claim made against the city, from the city against Ms. Porter?
Not at this time.
And no citations was issued?
Not that I'm aware of. Ms. Porter, I believe, indicated that she did not receive a citation.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions for the Porters? We'll have them sit down until we review this.
Well, we just want to add that if you look at the pictures, you see there is damage to the wheel opening above her right wheel, and you'll also see some damage on that right wheel. I don't believe that he almost made it past her. Part of his bike had to hit her car before the bumper. And as you can see, by the way, the bumper is torn, it was pulled away. So, it wasn't that he'd almost gotten past her.
Okay. Thank you all for coming down today. We'll review this and vote momentarily. Still looking at the pictures, and once we're through, I'll ask for a motion on the items besides the two that we've heard evidence about. I'll be looking for a motion on item 8, A through D, and then F, G, and I. All right, ready to vote then on the bulk of the claims recommended for denial, and we'll hold these two for a moment. All right, cast your votes. Okay, so those claims are denied.
And I guess, Laura, Laura, can I just ask, you collected insurance to repair your car. This amount is just representative of the deductible for your claim?
All right. I'll look for a motion, first of all, on item eight L, one E. This is Diana McDaniel. She was the woman who was here with her belief that the city vehicle had damaged the back of her car. About a motion, something to concern with that.
Since it was a he-said, she-said kind of argument, I think we ought to go ahead and pay that one, since we can't definitively prove we did not do it. And she can't prove we did. It's sort of a wash. It's relatively small amount of money to the city, important certainly to our citizens. And since we can't say with, you know, complete certainty that we didn't do it, I think we ought to pay it.
All right. We have a motion then to pay that claim. Is there a second? All right. It appears the motion is dying for lack of a second. Is there another motion on that item? You want to make a motion the other way, Pat? Just. Okay. We have a motion to deny. We have a second. All right. We now have a second.
Question?
Yes, Larry.
In business, sometimes you kind of split the difference. Is that legal or not, Kenny?
Yes.
This is for information, not a motion. So you could, you could take the amount of the claim, since it could be either way, just split it.
Yes, I would recommend, however, that you have the claimant agree to split it, or that we defer it and try to get an agreement with her to split it.
But we have a motion and a second to deny the claim. Anybody ready to vote? Everybody want to discuss it further?
I think Larry's suggestion, I would add some merit, given the lack of concrete evidence one way or the other.
Well, why don't we do this then, on this item? Why don't we have, why don't we defer this item, have city staff talk to her and see if she'll agree to a half settlement? There's going to be an extra penny there missing somewhere, but nonetheless, a half settlement, and then we'll review this once city staff's had a chance to negotiate with her. Sound good?
A quick question, please, maybe. Did you file an insurance claim for the damage? No, I'm sorry. I'm moving on to this other. I got, we got yours answered. I was moving on to Dana.
You know, I have an issue with this one, because there was nobody out there that saw anything. And I just feel like that you could set a bad line of decisions when you do have witnesses, like the next case that we just had them to sit down, where there were parties there that actually stole everything, and we only listened to one side, though. But that just kind of bothers me that you can wake up in the morning, and you go outside and you see something done to your car, and you just immediately assume that it was a city truck that did it.
Did you file an insurance claim?
No, ma'am, I did not. I wanted to see if the city would take responsibility before I had to file a claim and risk having my insurance rates raised.
I had the same.
It's hard also to come up with a $500 deductible on something that was not my fault. And I just thought that speaking with the city, that this would be something that could be handled without affecting my insurance.
I don't think anybody's suggesting it was your fault, but it is awfully hard, you know, if we don't have any-
I understand, and I'm just begging mercy on the courts, because I spend a lot of money on, you know, that's a nice truck, and I take good care of my vehicle, and it's very disturbing that the damage was done, and it's hard on me to, and it's scarred now, and even, and I have to drive around like that. I'm spending $36,000 on a vehicle like that, so.
Let me just put this out there for a thought. Maybe we defer this and get a statement from whoever was driving the truck. But there's supposed to be a certain distance that the residence is supposed to allow for the trucks to pick up your trash. It sounds like you've already stated that between you and your neighbor, your truck is extended out of the driveway onto the street. The neighbor has created a barrier in reference to where he puts his trash. You still want the city to do their job?
Yes, sir.
But there's not enough space for them to get in there to do the job?
I didn't hear her say that her truck protruded out into the street.
My truck is right at the edge of my driveway, and I have no control over where my neighbor put his trash can that morning, sir. And I was not aware of the trash can there. If I went into my home at 7:30, I mean, at 8:30 that night, and I came out of my house at 7:30 that morning, the trash had already been collected. I was not aware of where my neighbor had put his trash can, but I did see his trash can there when I was leaving, because I had to move it, so I didn't hit it with my truck when I backed out.
So you wouldn't hit his trash when you backed out, right?
Because it was there. I moved his trash can to, on the curb, because I did not want to hit my truck.
I thought you said you didn't notice the damage until you were already at work.
She was just trying to back her car out of the driveway, so she moved the truck.
I came around the front of my truck, and I moved the trash can up on the curb, and then I got in my truck. I did not go around the back end of my truck.
Mayor, I, my view is that we, when there is a dispute of the facts, we have the ability to make a decision or a compromise. But the fact is, in this case, there are no facts. She has a dent. That's it. There's no way to prove that we did it. I don't believe we can pay that kind of a claim. The second claim, where there's a dispute of the facts, I think that's a very reasonable time to talk about settlement. But a claim like this, you either pay it because you think we did it, or you don't pay it because there is no evidence that we did it. It seems to me this is clear that we cannot pay, in my mind, I can't vote to pay this claim, because there is no evidence that we did it. It just, it's there. So when there's a dispute, like there is in the second case, I think that's where you sit down and work out a compromise. In a case, perhaps, or you pay it, depending on what you think. But in a case where you just have a dent, I don't believe that's a, in my mind, that's not a kind of a case. It's sad. She has a nice truck, and I know she cares about it, and, but I don't know that that means that we have to pay for it.
Right.
I also have questions. I mean, I think it goes beyond this case. It's precedent for other claims in the future. Like Skip and Pete alluded to, what would happen if, in future cases? So unfortunately, it goes beyond just your case. It's implications for other claims in the future. At most, I would say the deductible of 500, but I, can we defer?
We can defer this item and have staff try and negotiate. A partial settlement was what I was thinking the council was headed toward wanting to see. I'm really trying to follow here.
We're not necessarily locked into precedent or doing the same every time.
No, this is, basically, she's asking you, if you take her version and believe everything she says, she's asking you to make an inference that it was, that it had to be the city trash truck because of the circumstances of the van parked there, and the trash things behind her truck, et cetera. So it's circumstantial.
The reality of it is, is that she's asked, if you take that position, you're basically saying that we did it, that a city official, that a city worker did damage her truck. And if you say, well, we damaged it, but we only want to pay you $250, you accept the $250. You're basically saying that you did it.
No, I think we're saying we believe that's what happened. I don't think we're saying we know. I think we're saying-
We always do the settlements, not admitting liability. But the, essentially, but the city trash driver, truck driver, I believe, we had in our file that he reported that he did not have any knowledge that it had happened. And then we had our other employee who went out there and took the photographs, and you have his statement in front of you. So really, it is a conflict of fact.
So we do have discretion on this item. I don't think you're setting a precedent for future councilors, other than your own discretion going forward.
When did this get reported?
I reported it the day of the day of the incident, and I turned that in the next day.
You reported it to the city the day that it happened? Or the day that you saw it in?
The day it happened, sir.
The damage, you saw the damage, right?
Both.
The next morning?
That Tuesday morning, because Monday night, like I said, I was at visitation all night, and there was no damages to my vehicle. And I do have witnesses that seen my vehicle as I left that evening, and I went straight home. Then when I came to work Tuesday morning, I had, went to load my truck, and I noticed the damages, and that's when I called the city, and they told me what procedure to take.
All right. David, did you want to say anything?
Well, it's a question from Ms. McDaniel. Assuming we do reach some kind of agreement, I'm also concerned about going forward. Can you get an agreement from your neighbors where they won't either put their trash carts so close to your vehicle, and also as far as that van being there, who I think also is contributing to the problem? Do you think you can get them to change how they're parking and putting the trash containers out on the street to avoid this possibility occurring in the future?
I have spoke with my neighbor, sir, and he has agreed to move his trash cans, and he has backed his van to where it's not parked by my truck anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
I move to defer, for facts, and also for the Municipal Counselor's Office to engage in discussion.
All right. We have a second on request for a deferral, and Gary, you're withdrawing your motion, I thought I heard you say?
Yes.
To deny? Okay. Okay. So the motion to deny has been made, it's been withdrawn and seconded, and withdrawn by the second also. Okay. Now we have a motion to defer for two weeks, and we have a second on that. So this item is to defer item eight L, one E for two weeks, in hopes that our city staff and Ms. McDaniel can agree to a term that is, an amount that is less than the amount listed on their docket. Ready to vote? All right. Cast your votes, and that decision passes by a count of eight to one.
Thank you.
Now we're going to vote on item eight L, one H. This is Laura Porter's request that we pay the $1,000 for her vehicle that was damaged on Joe Carter Avenue. Everyone clear on what we're voting on? All right. Do we have a motion regarding that item? The motion can be whatever you'd like. Do we have a motion to pay that claim or to not pay that claim? Okay. We have a motion to pay that claim.
I second it.
All right. Now we have a second. Okay. This will be a confession of judgment.
Correct.
And what's the implication of a confession of judgment?
Just paid by filing a case in court that is then paid out of the sinking fund.
All right. We have a motion and a second that we pay this claim. We're voting on item eight L, one H. Cast your votes, and that item will be paid. The vote is six, three. On item nine, these are claims recommended for approval. Is anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under item nine? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10, travel expenses, mayor and council to the national league of cities. We have a motion on item 10A.
I move the item, Your Honor.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
I would ask all my colleagues here to carefully consider the benefits of attending this conference before they go to it. I think it's, we've loosened our travel policy in response to the city manager's same approach as city employees, but I do think we need to evaluate very carefully the benefit to the individual councilman and to the city by attending this conference.
All right. And item 10B is the issue that we have already voted on twice, and it says, it's on here for a third time. Councilman Shadid, you want to make a motion? Okay. Do we have a second on item 10B? All right. We have a motion and a second. Everyone clear what we're voting on? All right. Cast your votes. The item fails four to five. All right. Items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
Yeah, just a brief comment. The, I was informed the other day by our Director of Public Works that the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority will start a project soon to add additional lanes on the Kirkpatrick Turnpike. And there will be some construction delays, and probably some opportunities for people to choose different routes. And I asked Dennis if he could arrange for a presentation that would explain the timing and the extent of the work out there to the public. And Dennis indicated he was going to get somebody from the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, Oklahoma Transportation Department, come in and make that presentation to the council sometime in the near future. Just a heads up there. We will have that available to us. Hopefully, they'll be able to phase their construction as to not cause too much of disruption around Christmas time, because particularly at the intersection of Eastern and the Turnpike, there's lots of traffic flowing in and out of Quail Springs, also.
All right. Skip?
I would like to announce that there will be a public meeting on Thursday evening at 7 o'clock at Fairview Baptist Church at 1700 Northeast 7th, in reference to the post office closure at 24th and MLK, and the possible consolidation of the post office being at 7th and Kelly. So the meeting will be at 7 o'clock at 1700 Northeast 7th, in order to give citizens a better awareness and a present some public trans, knowledge as it relates to the proposals and the possibility of still having dialogue with the post office as it relates to this whole issue and being more transparent through the process.
All right. Meg?
Two quick things, Mayor, if I could. I had an opportunity yesterday to tour our new public renebriet facility over at Fifth and Virginia. They just opened for business. That's probably not the right way to say it, but they opened officially Wednesday night. It is a huge improvement over what we've had available for over on the Walnut Bridge, and I think it's going to serve our community extremely well. I do want to say to the neighbors, we're having a couple of growing pains in terms of signage and kind of how we get people in and out of the building, but I think we've got some good solutions to work on that.
When that was approved, the zoning, we talked about that the drop-off would be in the back of that facility, and there was an incident when the police officer is new to the facility, first time down there, did not drop off to the proper door, and there were some issues. We're on top of that, and we'll address that issue. You know, it's a little bit of a new facility and a couple of growing pains. I'm sure-
A huge improvement for the neighborhood, the building.
I can assure you that that issue will be addressed.
And the building is no longer, you know, Pepto Bismol pink, and they've done a really wonderful job. So I want to compliment the Oklahoma City Metro Alliance on that project. And I also just want to let the neighbors know that next Tuesday night, in addition to having our redistricting meeting here in council chambers, we're also, our planning department is hosting a meeting in the Carriage House at the Overholzer Mansion on 15th Street to talk about some of the new historic preservation guidelines that will allow for greener improvements in your homes, energy efficiency, and window replacements and all. And I think it's going to be a really important meeting for those neighbors to attend. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. One, Councilor Salyer and Shadid and I got to attend the Greater Oklahoma City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Expo Saturday, and I know we had a great time, and we appreciate the invitation to attend that. Secondly, you know, and Pat, I'm going to kind of address your question about making sure we evaluate the cost of attending the National League of Cities meeting, and I respect that, I agree with it. But I will say something with respect to the inner-city visit that several of us got to attend last week in Minneapolis. I really found that very enjoyable, very enlightening. It, I think it gave us some confirmation as to what we're doing. We're going in the right direction, having seen what Minneapolis has accomplished and what they're going- what they're going through. Also, probably most importantly, it gave me a lot of optimism as far as our ability to assist and support our Oklahoma City Public Schools system, to improve the overall system based upon some ideas that were presented. So I do think that inner-city visit was so helpful, especially for someone like me, new to the council, and I appreciate the opportunity to attend that meeting.
Pete?
Hello.
Larry? Ed?
Two items. One, I'd like to acknowledge that the mayor got his diploma on Saturday, I believe. He made it through the executive MBA program at NYU. I think the council and the city will benefit and I think it's admirable. I'm trying to think of a diplomatic way to say it. It would be difficult to get through all that accounting and financing if I was more than one standard deviation above the average age of the students and I think it's very admirable. Second, not quite as happy a note, but I just want to know, talk about something that's coming up. We're going to have to deal with what to do with this $30 million for the OGME substation. Two events happened last Thursday which are seemingly unrelated but are very related and I think that, and that's asking the MAPS Advisory Committee to give an opinion as to what to do with that $30 million and Gary, I think wisely indicated that they don't have all the facts to make that recommendation. And then there was a post Ed Kelly editorial in the Oklahoman that was fairly strong in some of its opinions. I want to, I don't want to fight with the Oklahoman, but I think, and I don't want to inflame tensions, but I think this goes to the core of the issue. I think we're making progress and I think there's value in vetting this. You know you're close to the target when you start drawing heavy fire and I think that one reason for the ire in that editorial may be that if we continue down this line of thought, if we continue this discussion about whether the public was fully informed and whether the vote constitutes a bond and what do we do with this $30 million because what was promised during campaign literature, I think that that discussion is going to lead back to the Oklahoman. An example would be the OGME substation. You know, I was confused because the mayor would talk at the workshop, but there didn't seem to be an interest in discussing the substation before the MAPS III vote and I didn't understand what that meant. And then just kind of going back, there's a blogger named Doug Loudonback and looking at before the, he went to the mayor's office, he talked to David Holt. There was a frank and open discussion about what the $30 million would be required to move that substation and Doug Loudonback puts it in writing in his blog and that's the only place I can find it in writing. But it clearly was out there and Doug Loudonback is exchanging emails, he's friends with all the journalists at the Oklahoman, they all knew about this issue. They brought it to their news staff to do a story. Any objective third party would come to the conclusion that that's a story worth vetting before the MAPS III vote about you've got to move, there's an OGME substation at Southwest Fourth and Robinson, you're going to put a park there, you're potentially going to put a convention center there. That needs to be vetted, but the story, if you believe the account of these journalists, was killed. All the Oklahoman had to do was print that story and vet that in the public and we wouldn't be faced with, you know, did somebody say this, did we have this discussion or not have this discussion? And the preposterous predicament of having the MAPS Advisory Committee try and weigh down on this. Again, it's to learn from the past and to apply these lessons to the future. I'd invite the viewer to watch this YouTube video. It's a Fox News report, six days before the MAPS III election. It's called "Did Opubco Forget About Ethics?" That's a YouTube video that gives this Fox report and it talks about some of the problems that we had where a memo offering a paid day off for Opubco employees to go campaign for MAPS III was very controversial in the journalistic world. But we got into the same situation we talked about two weeks ago where we had the publisher of the Oklahoman, also the chairman of the Oklahoma City Chamber, and also responsible for the MAPS III campaign. Who would know the results of the convention sports and leisure study, but that also was not allowed to be published. And then in that report, Gil Hensley, the FOP president, was saying members of the media had made clear to him that there was clear direction, what stories would and would not allow to be printed. And he had think he caught some flack at the time, but when I talked to multiple journalists, they're all independently telling me the same thing he was saying then, is that stories are systematically being killed at the Oklahoman that are and are not allowed to be vetted. An internationally known journalist who recently talked with these journalists and heard some of the same things said, Ed, if what these journalists are saying is true, it rises to the level of scandal. The take-home point is that if there's a rationalization on utilitarian grounds, that withholding information from the public is for the greater good of the public, that's a slippery slope, that's a dangerous slope, because tomorrow someone else with a wildly different agenda could use the same rationalization to very destructive means. We need the Oklahoman and all the journalists to protect us. They are the fourth pillar of government and any threat to our representative democracy, it's their job to protect us from, whether that's plutocratic, theocratic, whatever. So the implications for MAPS III, again, becomes one of legitimacy. The argument oftentimes with righteous indignation is that we have this contract with the voters that we, the convention center, for example, has to be 280 million because that's what was on the campaign literature. If not everything was vetted, if information was withheld, then that, you have a problem with legitimacy. Oklahoman believes I have an obsession with the convention center. That's not true. I have an obsession with the process and we can learn from the mistakes that were made and we can apply them and we can improve upon it in the future. Thank you.
All right, Gary?
I had a question from a neighbor and it raised a question in my mind. We had, when we first initiated mandatory water rationing, that was lifted a few days later when some relief was felt, but we had put it back on again?
Yes.
We're under mandatory odd-even days right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think the lifting got, everybody got picked up on, I'm not sure everybody's picked back up on the mandatory again.
There's been, well, that may well be, but there's been pretty good coverage on it recently and hopefully we're getting the word out. If I could touch base on that just for a second. There's a number of events it had. When the heat wave first struck, we were doing fine and we had the large break on the 16-inch water main out by Draper and that required us to go into a mandatory situation at that point in time for a couple of days until that got fixed, which was just a couple of days. How after that, the recovery, the demand, the pent-up demand by the customers when we went off the rationing caused some problems, particularly we shut down the Capitol Complex and had problems over Presbyterian Health Services and NYU Health area at that point in time. So then we went to the odd-even at that point in time. You know, the heat is, you know, unprecedented at this point in time. We pumped 202 million gallons on Saturday, which is well over the system record, 202 million gallons. The system is hanging in there based upon the demands, but it's very tough. The system is being pushed at its full capacity right now. We are on odd-even rationing to try to keep everybody in some type of level of water. The forecast is something, I mean, it's even worse if you take it the next week. The forecast for today is 112 degrees on AccuWeather and it's, the next, there's no relief in the next seven to 10 days on it. So we are in the odd-even mode and do anticipate being there through that time. The other thing that's happening with the water system right now is the record number of small water main breaks we have and that's primarily caused by the high pressure in the system and then the dryness of the ground and the ground shifts a little bit and so we've had water main breaks. Marcia's here, she gave you a report this morning, I don't remember the numbers, but we had about a half year's worth of water main breaks, average water main breaks for a half year in July. So that's, kind of tells you the number of, and those are generally small lines, those are six-inch lines and eight-inch lines in front of houses and what we've been able to kind of stay on top of them. What we probably haven't stayed on top as well and we're putting additional resources on this, is the repairs and cleanup of them afterwards. We're kind of getting in, hitting them, getting out. The wastewater guys are coming in, following the water guys, the water guys are doing the repair and the wastewater guys are now being pulled off some of their wastewater functions to go and help on the cleanup at this point in time. Cleanup being, get the hole compacted and get some temporary patches in there. And again, we're struggling with that, but we are keeping up on the water main breaks to a reasonable backlog at this point in time, although we're working tremendous hours and quite frankly, the crews are, I'm sure, showing some signs of stress.
The news is, is when we start getting moisture, this Oklahoma red clay is going to start moving the other direction and we're going to start having them all over again.
I don't disagree with that.
All right, city manager reports?
A couple of things. We have, first of all, Amy Simpson's going to come up and give us a report and she's coming up to talk to us a little bit about our pricing agreements. I want to touch base on the sales tax report that's also in your packet. The sales tax check we got for July was a good check. It was a 5.6% over last year's numbers, about $834,000. That's pretty good. It was way over July of '09, $1.8 million over July of '09, which was the bottom of the recession, but only $360,000 over July of '08. So if you go back three years ago, we're up really just a small percent, a couple percent over where we were before we hit. And so I'm just cautioning you that, you know, you look at last year, well, that's not too bad. You look at the year before that, it's great. But if you look the year before that, and I think we just need to be cautious as we look at these checks to remember that, you know, we were on a graph like this and then we took a big dip and we're climbing back up and we're slightly over it. But we're just slightly over where we were three years ago in the recession and so the numbers are good, we're pleased where we're at, we're blessed, we're in a great shape compared to most other cities in the country. That being said, we're still only a couple percent over where we were on July collections from where we were in July of '08. So that's my optimistic caution. Amy, can you talk to us a little bit about pricing agreements? Amy Simpson is our purchasing agent and has a PowerPoint presentation for us this morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and council. The first slide shows the different types of pricing agreements prepared by the buyers in procurement services. So we prepare pricing agreements, resolutions, one-time buys, requests for proposals and professional services contracts. Today, we're going to specifically discuss pricing agreements. What is a pricing agreement? A pricing agreement is a type of contract entered into between the city and a third-party vendor wherein the vendor makes an offer to provide goods or services to the city for a specified amount of time at a specified price. However, there is no obligation upon the city to purchase any such goods or services. Pricing agreements are contracts required for materials and services which exceed 25,000 per unit or in aggregate by the city of Oklahoma City in a given year. Pricing agreements are based on specifications that are advertised for competitive bids and costs are estimated based on a three-year average for the purchase of the materials or services. In prior to procurement, bringing pricing agreements before council for approval, we have a bidding process that we follow. First, the specifications are developed based on the needs of city departments and for many pricing agreements, procurement services works with department experts out in the city. And our specifications should be clear and concise and contain a detailed and concise description of the materials and services that we're needing to purchase. Procurement identifies potential vendors through bid lists maintained by the buyers in procurement services. Many times vendors will call the buyers and request to be placed on our bid list and so anytime we advertise for bids, we notify these vendors that we have a bid available. And we also let the vendors know that each week we post new bids to OKC.gov so that they can check the website in case there are commodities that they offer that we're not aware of. And we also will mail just a postcard notifying vendors that we have a bid available and it directs them to our website so that they can download a copy of the bid. Our bids are advertised through legal notices which are published in a daily newspaper of general circulation in the city of Oklahoma City and all procurement services bids, as I mentioned, are also posted on OKC.gov each week. Our bids are then opened by a bid committee comprised of the purchasing agent, city clerk and city auditor or their representatives and then once the bids are opened, they're referred to staff for further evaluation. Generally, the bidding process takes around six to eight weeks from the time our specifications are advertised, however, it can depend on how complex the commodity is and also how many departments are involved in the review process. Through our evaluation process, we create bid tabulations, which are spreadsheets recording the bids and the data submitted by the bidders. And the tabulations are also used for bid comparison purposes. And procurement works with other city departments to ensure specifications are correct and departments are also involved in the bid analysis. Departments provide feedback on vendor performance and timeliness of deliveries and services Buyers and procurement services analyze bids to determine the lowest and best bidders. The following factors, including price, may be considered in this determination. We look at the vendor's ability to perform under the pricing agreement and provide the products and services requested and whether the vendor can provide the services within a specified time and the reputation and experience of the bidder and the quality of performance on previous agreements and also whether they have exceptions to the city's terms and conditions on the agreement. And then recommendations are then forwarded to the city council for their approval. As far as pricing agreement award and approval, a pricing agreement may be awarded by line item, groups of items, or to the overall lowest and best bid. One example of a line item bid that was awarded on the July 5th docket was a pricing agreement for the boiler maintenance program and chemical water treatment program for air conditioning and heating systems. So the lowest and best vendor was selected for each one of those areas. So in this situation, cost savings was obtained by awarding line item groups to two different vendors. We also have multiple awards to ensure adequate availability and timely delivery of supplies and departments are instructed to base their selection on product specifications, cost and availability. One example on the July 5th docket was the maintenance, repair and operations industrial supplies and services pricing agreements. And these agreements contain such items as abrasives, adhesives, fasteners and hand tools, among other industrial supplies. These types of commodities cannot be easily narrowed down to a couple of vendors due to the variety of items. Single bids are accepted only when it is likely the outcome will remain the same if rebid and the pricing is found to be acceptable. If it is determined that the city will save money by rebidding, then we'll update our bid list and re-advertise the bid. However, procurement services buyers are required to research and report single bid outcomes to the purchasing agent prior to presenting an item to council for approval. Important facts about pricing agreements. Pricing agreements do not obligate the city to purchase goods or services and quantities purchased are always contingent upon the availability of funds and prior to issuing a purchase order or utilizing a purchasing card, funds must be available. Pricing agreement management. Procurement services provides training on purchasing policies and procedures on a regular basis. We train department purchasers on vendor selection procedures. Departments are instructed to base their selection on product specifications, cost and availability. Purchasing policies and procedures training is mandatory for employees who purchase goods and services for city departments. Employees who utilize a purchasing card are also required to attend additional training for purchasing cards. Procurement services post current listings of pricing agreements to the city's internal website and the pricing agreements are also scanned and departments are trained where these can be located and which buyers to contact regarding their purchases. And buyers are familiar with the vendors and the pricing agreements currently in place. Departmental purchasers enter requisitions based on contract availability and then the buyers and procurement services review the purchase orders to assure compliance with our purchasing policies and procedures. And I wanted to talk a little bit about why we adopt state contracts. First, sometimes we adopt state contracts to supplement to our city pricing agreements to ensure availability and timely delivery. We have pricing agreements and adopt state contracts for some commodities. One example is our de-icing material and this is to ensure maximum availability during critical times. On items. On items covered by city and state agreements, we direct the department to use the vendor and agreement offering the greatest cost savings to the city. Sometimes state contracts do offer a larger discount, but procurement services buyers will research this. And most of the time, we award our own pricing agreements. And although we adopt state contracts, we are not obligated to purchase from these if the city has their own pricing agreements. At times, we utilize state contracts while we are working on a bidding process. And this keeps us in compliance with our policies and procedures while not holding up the purchase of needed commodities and services by city departments. There are times when utilizing a state contract allows us to meet time constraints also that a bidding process may not allow for. And I wanted to also talk a little bit about open-market purchases. Because generally, when you approve our pricing agreements, you see an open-market resolution that's presented along with that. Open-market purchases between 2,500 and 25,000 require three informal competitive price quotes. And open-market purchases by commodity exceeding 25,000 must be approved by city council. There are some commodities that vendors are unwilling to bid on due to price fluctuations in the marketplace. And one example of that is at the purchase of propane and commodities and/or services that are unique every time. And an example of that is training. So training is unique and difficult to bid. However, when training is not sole source, we do obtain three competitive price quotes. And three competitive price quotes are obtained for purchases over 2,500 even if an open-market resolution has been approved by council. So even if you have approved a resolution for us, we still obtain three competitive price quotes for purchases between 2,500 and 25,000. And we also have open-market resolutions if there's a possibility that the city will exceed our $25,000 bid limit prior to the award of a new pricing agreement. So buyers and procurement services will prepare an open-market resolution until pricing agreement award. And this allows us to stay in compliance but still obtain necessary goods and services for the city while we're trying to finalize the agreements. And the final slide is some statistics from 2011. We presented 221 new pricing agreements before council. And we renewed 371 agreements. And on renewals of pricing agreements, we require a letter from the vendor agreeing to the renewal. And in order for the city to renew, the vendor must be responsive in providing the goods and services. And there was no market advantage to the city to be gained from rebidding. So if we find that there is a market advantage to be gained from rebidding, then we don't renew and we have the option to rebid. And we prepared 130 open-market resolutions and 47 sole-source resolutions. Most of our sole-source resolutions are for proprietary software maintenance services. And we presented 30 state contract adoptions and prepared 10 one-time buys. And there were 21 either new leases or renewal of leases prepared. And I also wanted to note that 86% of our vendor invoices are paid within 30 days of the invoice date. And a lot of them are paid quicker than that. And we mention this just to say that it's important to us that our vendors are paid timely. And we believe by paying our vendors timely, we're getting more participation in our bidding process. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No question but a comment. Thank you very much, Amy, for doing this. And I think it was my suggestion perhaps that we have this little review. Maybe I found it very helpful and hope everybody on the council did. I want to thank Amy and Jim for doing it.
You know, I think one of the things that validates the process is the fact that we spend a lot of money. We're a large organization and a large variety, from things that we need to buy, from animal welfare to the police department, various specific chemicals and laboratory supplies and that type of stuff. And we have, very few vendor complaints. And we do, we do have an internal process to deal with those. And then if that doesn't work out, then of course they come to council. But very few do come to council because of the processes we have in place. And we try to balance having adequate processes in places to protect and make sure that we're getting the best prices and we're making sure it's open to the vendors and such. And have that balance so that it's not so difficult either for the vendors or for our internal departments to purchase. And so it's a tough balancing act in there to have those controls and yet be as efficient at it as we can be.
If any, this is published online, these agreements?
All of them. All of our bids are published online.
Where would you find that?
It's WW, well, at OKC.gov and then bids.
Under bids?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Any other things? Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Pittman is here.
She just left.
She just left, okay. I think my mic was not on. Representative Pittman is here with the...
Let her down together.
Okay. I was just repeating it for the benefit of those who might be listening on the microphone since it wasn't on when I mentioned it first. Hello, Anastasia?
Hello.
Hi, you're up.
I apologize. I stepped out and just hit the call. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. And for the record, we will need you to say your name and address. I apologize for making you introduce yourself.
No problem.
And your position.
No problem. Anastasia Pittman, State Representative, Oklahoma City, House District 99. My address is 601 Bass Circle in Oklahoma City. I just wanted to say thank you for the change order, number one, the one that you have for the ADA compliances. I've had several calls. And as most of you have met, a dear friend of mine who calls very frequently, Mr. Roy Stafford. But I do, we did have two fatalities on that side. So I know that Ward 7, I believe Ward 4, Mr. White, and Ward 6, all tend to surround my area. And I would love to meet with you as well to introduce myself. I do have parts of House District 99 that are duplicative of your area as well. So I just want to say thank you. I commend you. You have my full support. Please feel free to contact me if you need any assistance on my part for those change orders. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
We have executive session. We'll be back.